Good morning. The June 28, 2021 Council briefing meeting will now come to order. The time is 9:31 a.m. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mosqueta.
Present.
Peterson.
Here.
Sawant.
Present.
Strauss.
Present.
Herbold.
Here.
Juarez. Lewis.
Present.
Morales. And Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you so much. If there's no objection, the minutes of June 21, 2021 will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the minutes are adopted. I don't have anything to report on the President's report this morning, so let's move right into the federal legislative briefing. We do have Ciara Howlett Brown from our Office of Intergovernmental Relations with us, as well as Leslie Polner from Holland and Knight. And before I hand it over to Ciara and Leslie, just want to acknowledge that we have been joined by Councilmember Juarez. Ciara, take it away.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. And like a few of you, I have several fans going, so let me know if there's any sound issues. But hopefully, everybody is staying cool. Thank you for allowing us some time this morning. I know it's a very timely update. We were just intending to do a general update, but then late last week, we had a bipartisan infrastructure package agreement. So we'd love to talk through that a little bit and get a little more detail on that. But Leslie is here. She's going to join us and tell us a little bit about the bipartisan infrastructure package, an update on the surface transportation reauthorization, an update on the FY22 appropriation process, and then a few more policy updates of note. So I will just let Leslie kick it off, and please let us know throughout if you have any questions. Leslie?
Great. Thanks, Ciara, and thank you, President Gonzalez. Nice to see everyone and hope that your families are staying safe through the heat. I'm going to share my screen. Let me know. Are you able to see it?
We can see it.
Okay, terrific. So excited to be here with you this morning. First and foremost, really exciting news for the city. As you may have all seen, we got great news over the weekend that the city is going to be receiving an $11.2 million infra grant for the West Seattle Bridge, which is very exciting. Huge thank you to our delegation, Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, Congressman Jaya Paul, and Congressman Smith. All of them were extremely, extremely focused and active to make this all happen. And then, of course, a huge kudos to SDOT and the Department, to Sam, and to Heather Marks, and to others who have played a huge role in getting this over the finish line. So really, really exciting news as we start our infrastructure update with some good news from home. Let me just say, you know, that we are definitely in a very fluid situation. As I'm sure you all saw in the news, you know, the bipartisan agreement was announced. The President immediately had to make some clarifying comments about it. So as, you know, as we're discussing this this morning, you know, some of this is dynamic and changing. And at the moment, it's really, we really don't have a ton of details. Let me see if I am able to hopefully move this along here. Okay, are you able to see that? Okay, terrific. So President Biden and a bipartisan group of senators have reached a deal on a $1.2 trillion infrastructure package. The infrastructure plan is really a modified version of the American Jobs Plan, and it includes funding for roads, transit, bridges, broadband, EV infrastructure, clean energy, and water. There are definitely things that were included in the American Jobs Plan that are not included here. Notably, for example, housing is not a part of this plan. And so you're seeing the President, in his remarks, you know, on Friday, say that reconciliation, a reconciliation package is also going to be needed to address some of these additional broader priorities. The President on Friday, of course, said that, you know, he would veto legislation unless he received both reconciliation and the bipartisan package on his desk. He has since walked that back. And so at this point, bipartisan, the bipartisan package and reconciliation are going to work in tandem, but it's not clear necessarily that he won't sign the bipartisan deal unless he has reconciliation on his desk as well. The details are really pretty light at the moment on the infrastructure framework. And so we're talking about, you know, approximately $579 billion in new spending over five years for a total of $1.2 trillion over eight years. And so, you know, wide variety of kind of very top-line numbers. And as, you know, you talk to everyone from members on to staff, right? Everyone's like, oh, you tell me what's in the package because I haven't seen it. So it's this very high level, right? $109 billion for roads. You know, we don't know what this means. We expect to see legislative text around the week of July 12. And even the process for how they're going to develop the text has not been identified at this point. The expectation, of course, is that since this is really, you know, the Senate kind of really plays the most important role on all of this right now, is that it's going to be very Senate-heavy. So if you're looking at, you know, legislation that has received bipartisan support in the past from the Senate side, that will likely be the anchor for a lot of this. So, you know, more details to come, but, you know, including, of course, in the elusive how we pay for it. You know, really, they've sort of identified kind of a menu of potential sources, how much they're expecting, exactly what they're talking about with some of these top high-level concepts, I would call them, remains to be seen. So we'll be sharing details as we get them. In the meantime, the House is moving along with their own quote-unquote "infrastructure" package. And so, starting with surface transportation reauthorization, which is going to be on the floor this week, which is also getting combined with water infrastructure as well. And so the House has put together a drinking water and stormwater and wastewater bills. Those are being combined with a surface transportation bill. Again, that's going to be voted on the House this week. One thing to note from the water infrastructure piece is that part of that is going to make permanent the low-income household assistance program that you saw created in December, and then again funded through the American Rescue Plan to provide direct assistance to low-income households with their utility bills. And that's being authorized to the tune of $8 billion a year. For the service transportation bill, as you all know, the service transportation bill actually expired last year. It's been continued for another year. On the Senate side, they've been moving along, trying to proceed in a bipartisan fashion, and they've moved, you know, it's divided among many committees. So they've moved, the Senate Environment and Public Works Committee has passed that committee on a bipartisan basis. The Senate Commerce Committee, which of course Senator Cantwell chairs, has moved its portion of the bill, and that moved on a bipartisan basis. The Senate Banking Housing Committee, which oversees the transit portion, that's actually, they're probably not going to be able to move that portion on a bipartisan basis. You've got Senator Toomey, who is the ranking member from Pennsylvania, you know, many of you know, really conservative member. So they're probably not going to be able to move that through committee, and that will just get folded in at some point with that bill when it comes to the floor. But in the meantime, on the House side, they are largely moving their bill really on partisan lines. You know, the House Invest Act passed TNI Committee by a vote of 38 to 26. Only two Republicans voted for it. It will be on the floor this week. It's not expected to receive very much Republican support, if any. And so that program authorizes $547 billion over five years for highways, transit, rail, and safety programs of note. It includes, it's the first bill in 16 years to include earmarks. And so Seattle, working with Congresswoman Jaya Paul and Congressman Smith, was able to secure three projects in the bill. The East Marginal Way corridor improvement for $2.34 million, $1.8 million for Georgetown to South Park connection, and then $750,000 to MLK Junior Way Safe and Accessibility Improvements project. Among the highlights for the House Invest Act, you know, Chairman DeFazio has really seen this as not just a transportation bill, but really a climate bill. And so has put in a number of resiliency measures, you know, ranging from EV charging infrastructure to new carbon pollution elimination programs. They've also tried to enact some of the President's priorities. So for example, $3 billion for a reconnecting neighborhoods discretionary grant program. So a number of pieces that you've seen the President also highlight in his American Jobs Plan are also included in the House Invest Act. And then just going back again on the Senate side, just to flag, highlight a couple of items that were included there in the Senate EPW bill. You know, given that the bill was bipartisan, I think one of the really impressive things is that they were able to get a number of climate provisions into that bill. You know, so again, a $6.4 billion program, formula program to reduce transportation emissions, a new $250 million congestion relief competitive grant program, EV charging, which really has received a tremendous amount of bipartisan support. And then for Senate Commerce, some really exciting things, including $1 billion to implement Vision Zero safety plans, which is very exciting, $1.5 billion a year to actually authorize the, it's now called the Raze Program, but it was the Build Program, and before that, it was the Tiger Program. That program's actually never formally been authorized. It's always been through appropriations, so it really creates a permanent place for it. And then just moving on to appropriations, as you all know, and as we've talked about, this is the first time that the House has tried to reinstate earmarks. And so the House right now is in the middle of marking up their bills. And so we, you know, of the projects that Congressman Smith and Congresswoman Jaya Paul are advancing and that the committee accepted, we've got $766,000 for a Health One expansion program, and then $400,000 for a renewable energy home heating conversion program. The Senate is further behind. Their process has been even more convoluted than the House's. But so they have not even announced their markup schedule at this point. Unclear also now with infrastructure happening, how that's going to impact the Senate and their markup process. But, you know, they're undoubtedly going to need to do another continuing resolution, you know, as the fiscal year expires September 30. I think the one thing to flag that is a potential lightning rod and that everyone's sort of waiting on here in DC is that the debt ceiling expires in early August. And as you all may recall from, you know, a decade ago, it was a fight over the debt ceiling that got us to sequestration. I'm not saying that we're going to get to sequestration again, but the debt ceiling tends to be, you know, a really controversial, hard vote. And so given all that's looming in the background, I think everyone sees that as one potential action-forthing mechanism to bring people to the table to continue negotiating, because the debt ceiling will need to be attached to something to move forward. Finally, I just want to mention on immigration policy, you know, obviously, the President has made DACA a huge priority. And with Democratic majorities in the House and Senate, I think everyone is anxious to try to get something done on immigration reform. Everyone is waiting to see what the Senate parliamentarian will rule on immigration and whether or not there are aspects of immigration reform that could potentially go on a reconciliation bill. And in the meantime, of course, the House, you know, has already taken up the American Dream and Promise Act, the Farm Work Modernization Act. You are now seeing Senate Judiciary Committee doing hearings on these bills and aiming to take action on these bills as well. And part of that is very much about, of course, the issue and trying to get immigration reform through. It also kind of helps to lay the foundation for why the Senate needs to get rid of the filibuster, because it's going to be very hard to get these bills through. So kind of a two-pronged strategy there in trying to push these through the Senate. And you're seeing the same thing, of course, on Voting, right, and for the People Act. So these are all things that we're watching really closely as well. I'm going to stop there because I feel like I've thrown a lot out, but happy to take any questions at all. And Ciara, please jump in if there's anything that you wanted to mention that I've left off.
Okay. Thanks, Leslie. That is a lot of information. Some good news, some not-so-great news. But looking for any hands raised of folks who may have questions. I see that Councilmember Peterson does have his hand raised, but if other colleagues have questions, please don't hesitate to raise your hand. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank our Office of Intergovernmental Relations and Leslie for her expertise there on the ground in DC, because it is a very convoluted process that they go through, and it's made even more convoluted with the thin margin of, you know, one extra vote in the US Senate for the Democrats. So thank you for giving us this update. We realize it's fluid, and please let us know how we can be helpful.
Okay, any other questions? Leslie, just a sort of a 30,000-foot level question on some of these funding opportunities. So I see that there are specific projects within the city of Seattle that have been identified and earmarked for receiving federal dollars. In all of the other categories in which there isn't earmarking, but just categories of investments, I just want to get assurance from you that the city of Seattle can expect to receive direct grants from the federal government. And if you have a sense of how much that is, that would be great to know now. And I just want to get the assurance that we're not going to have to go through a state granting process for any of these dollars.
So I think it depends. Candidly, it's going to depend on some of the funding sources. Some of them will come out through by formula. Some of them will be things, you know, particularly on the transportation bill, you know, that you'll work with PSRC, with like Puget Sound Regional Council. Some of them are going to be competitive, some of them will be competitive grants that the city will apply for directly to US DOT. So it is, it is a wide variety. I would say the one piece, just in terms of managing expectations, I have not heard on the table and don't anticipate being on the table at this point, because it was so hard to get over the finish line, is I don't know that we'll see another round of direct funding the way that we did in the American Rescue Plan. That was, you know, you're already seeing Republicans trying to make the move to claw back some of those. I don't think that that's going to happen, but I haven't seen anything that says, you know, here's going to be this direct allocation to the city, the way that we saw with the American Rescue Plan. There are going to be ample opportunities, however, for the city to compete for grants. And I would anticipate, given all that the city is doing around equity, around climate, that we will be incredibly competitive for these grants, that we will be able to compete very, very well.
Okay, that is helpful information. As you all continue to understand more about sort of the process aspects of this, that would be helpful to us, because I think we were anticipating that it would follow suit with the model related to the ARPA dollars. And so it would be helpful to know what we can expect as those details begin to solidify. So I appreciate that, Leslie. Colleagues, any other questions or comments? Just scanning the room here. I don't see any other questions on this portion.
Council President Gonzalez, I'll just jump in to say, we'll be back probably in September to do another update for you all. But in the interim, as things progress, as you said, we'll definitely keep you updated if you all have questions. We'll do that. And then to your funding question as well, I know OIR in particular is doing a lot of work right now on solidifying and strengthening our grant application process and how the city is applying for grants and being competitive for grants. So that's something that we're focusing on, too, just knowing the new climate of this administration and the increased funding accessibility that exists. So something that's on our radar.
That's great. Good to know. Good to know. Okay. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? All right. I think that's the end of the presentation, right?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie, so much for making time to dial into our meeting today. You too, Ciara. Really appreciate it. And we'll see you, we'll see you soon. And I'm sure folks will contact you with any follow-up questions. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, all. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move into a preview of today's City Council, Actions Council, and Regional Committees. The regular roll call rotation begins with Councilmember Mosqueta, followed by Peterson, Sawant, Strauss, Herbold, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and then I will conclude this agenda discussion. I did receive a note from Councilmember Morales that unfortunately, she has an early end time today for a council briefing due to another commitment. So she has asked if she could go first, and I have checked in with Councilmember Mosqueta, who has agreed to that slight reshuffling of the order. So we are going to hear from Councilmember Morales first, and then we will go to Mosqueta, Peterson, Sawant, Strauss, Herbold, Juarez, Lewis, and then I will go ahead and conclude this portion of the agenda. So thanks, Councilmember Mosqueta, for your cooperation. And take it away, Councilmember Morales.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you very much, Council President and Councilmember Mosqueta, for letting me jump in here. I want to begin this morning by acknowledging that we had several drownings in Lake Washington this weekend. This record-breaking heat, coupled with the still very frigid waters, make this a really dangerous time in our waterways. And so I just want to remind the public to learn and follow water safety guidelines. Wear a life jacket if you're on a boat or on a paddleboard. Try to limit your alcohol consumption. And remember that cold water shock really leads to panicked breathing. So it's important to try to steady your breathing so that you can keep a cool head and try to get to safety. You know, I'll have more to say about the situation on Lake Washington in particular later, but I do want to just remind folks that the water is still really cold, and you need to be careful as you're out there. There are no items from the Community Economic Development Committee meeting today's agenda. Our next meeting is not until Tuesday, July 20. I think we might be done with appointments, but we'll see. Anyway, the meeting for that committee is in a couple of weeks. On Friday, I met with neighbors in the art space Mount Baker Lofts. I've been meeting with them, as you all know, for the better part of a year, about community safety issues in the area. These neighbors convened a meeting on Friday with Sound Transit, SDOT, with homeless service providers, along with myself, the Executive's Office, and State Senator Rebecca Saldana, who represents the South End, 37th. Neighbors across the city, we've been hearing from folks that they really want their elected officials working together to address the challenges that our communities are facing. And so in the wake of shooting that we had last week at the Mount Baker Light Rail Station, as well as the arson at the nearby Chisty homeless encampment that resulted in two of our homeless neighbors losing their lives, and the calls we've been receiving from neighbors in Georgetown, the CID, Beacon Hill, Pioneer Square, State Senator Saldana and I are planning a follow-up community forum to identify some short- and medium-term action steps that we can all, as electeds, work on together to try to move forward and really address the concerns that we've all been hearing about from our neighbors. So we will keep you posted once that is set. A related note, there were several shootings in the South End last week. I attended a restorative justice town hall that some of our Reiner Beach neighbors had on Thursday evening, and we heard really clearly from young people in the community that they want more investment in young people. They want investment in their ability to negotiate conflict and in the organizations that offer that kind of support. So my office will be meeting with community-based first responders to discuss what a first response protocol and coordination could look like for making that sort of transition to community-based supports. For the last year, my office has also been meeting with constituents who live around Andrews Bay in Lake Washington, and those who like to boat in the bay. As I mentioned before, the drownings that happened this weekend, those are tragedies that are happening every summer and happen frequently. There are different opinions about how to prevent these tragedies. Some folks would like to see an increase in Harbor Patrol to prohibit boats, and some would like to see us prohibit boats altogether, the way they did at Waneda Bay up in Kirkland. So this weekend, I joined the Recreational Brewing Association as they were asking boaters about this issue. The association is asking boaters to pledge to boat responsibly by refraining from excessive drinking and noise, and to acknowledge that they are anchoring in a natural habitat for turtles and eagles and beavers. And there was even a cougar in Seward Park recently. So the association has asked my office to explore increasing the visibility and the number of buoys in the water, as well as decreasing speed and increasing the signage about the noise ordinance that exists here. And they're really hoping that these measures will mitigate issue and prevent a ban on boating in Andrews Bay, or anchoring in Andrews Bay, I should say. So just want to give you all a heads up. These conversations have been going on, as I said, since last summer, and we will continue to figure out how best to address the issue. On Saturday, I met with an amazing group of young people in Reiner Beach as they completed a mural as part of the Bershiva Beach Restoration Project. You'll recall that last year, Council approved $250,000 in the budget to support bringing Beach back to Reiner Beach. Our seed funding led to an additional $750,000 in grants. A lot of that comes from a community project fund from the state of Washington and was approved in their annual capital budgets project. So that was supported by all of the 37th District's elected officials, Senator Saldana, and Representatives Harris, Tally, and Tomiko Santos. So that was great to see. And, you know, despite the heat, we had a dozen or so young people out finishing the mural, celebrating their work with great food and musical performances, and really a very grateful community. So I want to celebrate them again. And I do want to thank the Department of Neighborhoods, because they offered the support of the celebration with helping fund, or I think completely funding, the entertainment and the food. And folks were sweaty and really enjoying themselves out there. And then finally, along with several colleagues, I was happy to join the grand opening of the AIDS Memorial Pathway Project at the Light Rail Station and Cal Anderson Park and see the art installations that are there. It was a really moving celebration and an important reminder that during the AIDS pandemic, our government ignored the disease for almost two decades. So I'm grateful for the work that has been happening. And really, it was for me an opportunity to reflect on how grateful I am that my friends who are living with AIDS now have lifesaving medication that allows them to live a normal life and really continue to contribute to our communities. So that is all I have, colleagues. Again, I want to thank Councilmember Mosqueta for letting me hop in. Again, I want to thank Councilmember Mosqueta for letting me hop in. And thanks to the, our federal intergovernmental relations team for the briefing this morning. Glad to see the Georgetown to South Park Trail in there, along with the other projects that we will be getting some support for. That is all I have, colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Morales. Any comments or questions on that report? Councilmember Herbold, please.
Thanks. Councilmember Morales's comments around increased violent crimes in our community just reminded me that I wanted to give folks a real quick update on HSD's RFP process, which they've been working hard to find ways to expedite getting the dollars out the door. They are planning on having contracts start July 15. I think it's really incredible to appreciate the fact that the number of applicants that they received was so much greater than the funding available. This is a $10.4 million capacity building RFP for community safety projects. They, the RFP received over 70 applications requesting more than three times the allocated $10.4 million. Again, the goal is to have a contract start date of July 15. And as I mentioned, HSD has done a number of things to try to expedite the contract process, both by contacting applicants upon announcement of awards, completing all the pre-work of screening applicants for documents needed to start contracts in the front of the process, completing contract templates in front of the process, and also hiring additional temporary staff to expedite the contract development and community based relationship building. The staff, of course, will be part of the Safe and Thriving Communities Division. And so I just lift this up because of, I just want to underscore that HSD is keenly aware of the need to get these, these funds out the door to support the important community based, community safety work that's being done throughout the city. Thanks.
Thanks for that reminder and those additional details, Councilmember Herbold. Really appreciate it. Any additional comments or questions? All right, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Again, thank you, Councilmember Morales, for letting me know that you needed to go a little earlier. I understand that you will be leaving today's meeting at 11:00 AM, but you'll be hanging on until then. So with that being said, let's go ahead and hear from Councilmember Mosqueta next.
Good morning, colleagues. I hope everyone is staying safe, hydrated, and cool in the last few days, and especially today. For our friends who are watching this online, there is a number of cooling sites as well that we posted on our website, and the city has shared. So I do hope folks are able to access those various sites today as we seek to get through the three digit heat wave here that has been fueled by global warming. We are excited to be talking about two pieces of legislation from the Finance and Housing Committee meeting on today's, excuse me, on the introduction and referral calendar from today. There's the South Park Transfer for Affordable Housing Development and MFTE COVID Extension Legislation. This is a piece of legislation that was made possible by some important work by the state legislature this year. So we'll have two pieces of legislation in the upcoming months related to MFTE. And this first one is COVID specific extension legislation that we will be moving forward through our committee, and then more follow up work to come on MFTE later this summer. We don't have any items on the Finance and Housing Committee for today's full council agenda, but I will be bringing forward a proclamation in conjunction with Council President Gonzalez to honor Dave Schmitz. As you folks know from our meeting last week, Dave Schmitz did pass away on June 20 after a long battle with cancer. And he had spent his life battling against corporate greed, making sure that workers had their rights and dignity in all workplaces. And he's the founding president of United Food and Commercial Workers Local 21. He spent his life fighting alongside workers to improve working conditions, communities, and the lives of workers in Seattle and Washington State. And his leadership truly went even beyond the unions that he helped to form, his leadership to fight for $15 an hour minimum wage at the national stage, and he helped set the standard for racial reckoning in the labor movement. We are going to be honored to be able to have his family members, Pam Bluman Schmitz and Diane Schmitz, in our full council meeting today to receive the proclamation, along with family members from United Food and Commercial Workers Local 21. That proclamation did get sent out on Friday afternoon, and I, oh, excuse me, midday on Friday, and I hope that folks have had a chance to look at it. And Council President, maybe I'll pause here for additional comments and.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Mosqueta, for bringing that forward so, so quickly. Really appreciate the opportunity to partner with you on this really important proclamation. I see that Councilmember Sawant has her hand raised.
I am, of course, going to be adding my signature to this proclamation honoring the life and legacy of Brother Dave Schmitz. I wanted to offer heartfelt condolences from my office and from Socialist Alternative to his longtime partner and wife, Pam Bluman Schmitz, his family and loved ones, and UFCW and other union members everywhere who were impacted by his life. This is a loss for the whole labor movement. I wanted to mention the important role Dave played in militant job actions in 1990s, first with Jobs with Justice, and then during the 1999 protests against the WTO, the World Trade Organization meeting in Seattle. Dave was a part of, and indeed a leader in, the important work of building a more militant labor movement in Seattle during that period. He participated in organizing direct actions, including building occupations, sit downs in bosses' offices, and other forms of civil disobedience that built worker confidence with a fighting approach. At the WTO protests, as many know, dubbed the Battle in Seattle, Dave led UFCW and other union members in taking the streets alongside tens of thousands of protesters. I wasn't there myself, because I was in North Carolina at that time, but this is based on accounts from labor activists who were active with Jobs with Justice, including Jonathan Rosenbloom, who is himself a rank and file union member and works in my office.[1043.19]
Council President Gonzalez.
Hi.
That's eight council members.
Thank you so much, and we'll make sure to circle back to Councilmember Morales either before she leaves today at 11:00 or during today's full council, just to make sure she has an opportunity to add her signature if she'd like to. Okay, back to you, Councilmember Mosketa.
Thank you all very much for that. I know that the UFCW family and Dave Schmidt's family is going to be very appreciative and look forward to being able to honor his life and all that he's accomplished this afternoon. So thanks all for signing on. A few updates of-
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Hi, Councilmember Morales.
Can I please add my name to?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilmember Morales. All nine council members have added their signature to the proclamation honoring Dave Schmidt's. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, and thanks for your support and leadership on this as well, as folks from UFCW21, specifically Executive Secretary Joe Mizrahi, who reached out real very quickly and asked for this opportunity, and we were much obliged to be able to work in partnership with him and the UFCW21 team. In terms of updates, I wanted to provide a few updates from the Office of Labor Standards. As folks may have heard, there was breaking news last week. The Office of Labor Standards announced a $3.4 million settlement with Uber under Seattle's Gig Worker Paid Sick and Safe Time Ordinance. The settlement will remedy violations that the ordinance found for over 15,000 workers. During the investigation and after its conclusion, Uber voluntarily corrected the issues that were largely due to technical software glitches, they say, that impacted workers' access to paid sick and safe time accounts, the number of accrued days, and inadvertent cancellations of paid sick and safe time requests. This is the largest settlement in OLS's history. This is a report out from OLS. I will just add to that. I know that many of us who were on council at the time, myself, Council President Gonzalez, a number of other folks, were very excited about the opportunity to have worked on strengthening Office of Labor Standards funding for their investigation over the past four years that I've been on council. This is something that I have fought for tremendously because we know how few investigators there are at the state level for workplace violations at the state level, emphasizing the importance of Office of Labor Standard to have personnel and the opportunity to do individual investigations and company-wide investigations. In fact, sector-wide director-initiated investigations are really critical because it's often workers, workers of color, immigrant and refugee workers, women workers who are more likely to experience workplace violations. In this case, drivers for Uber are often immigrant workers who may speak English as a second language as well, and making sure that they have someone who is going to be investigating complaints that get brought forward in their industry is incredibly important. The fact that $3.4 million is now on the kitchen tables of workers means that it's not in, it means that it is circulating in our local community. It's helping to feed and clothe folks. It's helping to house and care for people. This is dollars that would have otherwise gone to the company itself. And so whatever the sort of justification is for how it got out to folks, the fact that we had this law on the books, it's something that we all worked on in this last pandemic to make sure that those who are driving folks to grocery stores and driving them to medical appointments in this time of the pandemic, that they had sickly protections as well, was something that we can all be very proud of because it was a national standard that got upheld. And now, when we pass laws, our expectation is that those laws will be adhered to, and when they're not, there will be penalties. There were penalties, and $3.4 million issued to working families last week means that that type of settlement will be a warning to other companies that they too need to make sure that there's no glitches and that they need to be making sure that their policies and practices are in line with the city ordinance. This is something that we know from the National Employment Law Project, that every time that there's a workplace violation that is put out to the public, more companies come into compliance because they too don't want to be in the same situation. So really proud of Office of Labor Standards for this historic investment. I'm proud of this council and was proud to be the prime sponsor on the legislation last year to help us create paid sick and safely for these gig drivers. And I am extremely proud to be standing in solidarity with the workers who brought up these violations to begin with. Again, $3.4 million, a historic day, and I know that I and others have had the chance to congratulate workers. Myself and Council President Gonzalez had the chance to congratulate workers, but just wanted to offer this note of congratulations publicly as well to them and the Office of Labor Standards. Additionally, Office of Labor Standards recently posted the commuter benefits fact sheet on its website. You can find that. And more information about the domestic workers ordinance also on their website with a new recorded webinar. In related news, Office of Labor Standards announced that the Drivers Union Collaborative, which consists of the Drivers Union and Teamsters 117, is the recipient of $5 million award to provide Driver Resolution Center services from July 1st, 2021 through July 31st of 2022. Driver Resolution Center service will include culturally and linguistically relevant outreach and education on labor standards rights as well as representation in deactivation disputes as outlined in the TNC Driver Deactivation Ordinance. And folks will remember, this was also something that was nationally acclaimed for the work that we're doing, not only to pass legislation that is being led by workers and what they have pointed out is important to them, but making sure that there is a place for workers to continually go to raise issues and concerns and get resolutions. So congratulations to the Drivers Union and Teamsters 117. From Finance and Administrative Services, wanted to let you know that they are reviewing comments on the short-term rental platforms, comments that were provided during the recent public comment period, and have advised short-term rental platforms that the current rules are going to remain in effect. Additionally, thanks to the Consumer Protections, Customer Service, and Operational Staff, the short-term rental platforms are increasingly blocking listings without valid city operator license. One, on one of the platforms, the number of such listings has declined from over 800 unlicensed, unoperator-licensed postings to less than 160. So more work to do, but very exciting. And wanted to let you know things that are on my calendar. Last week, we did have the chance to attend the Association of Washington City's Annual Conference. Myself and Councilmember Strauss, who are members of AWC, had the opportunity to participate in their annual conference and board meetings. Very excited about the participation that we had in the University of Washington's new leadership program, which is with women who are interested in public policy and advocacy. And every year I speak to that group, hosted by the University of Washington Women's Center, and was proud to have gone back again. I attended the AIA Conference on Building an Equitable 15-Minute City in participation with the South Seattle Chamber of Commerce, El Centro de la Raza, and Chief Planner for the City of Portland. And we signed the ARPA legislation. So there was a great press conference with a number of colleagues there as we watched the mayor sign the work that we have done over the last two months into law. And I'm already getting messages from a number of people thanking us for the work that we've done and asking how they can help apply, how they can apply for some of the small business assistance, childcare support, and direct cash. So word is getting out about the important elements in that. And lastly, folks, I wanted to note something that's very exciting that's upcoming in partnership with Councilmember Strauss. We are excited that there will be a preliminary proposal for legislation that will be forthcoming in later this summer, in August, in partnership with Councilmember Strauss, who is a co-sponsor of this. We are anticipating legislation this fall that could seek to change the name of zoning to be more inclusive. And the preliminary proposal helps to move our zoning titles to be in line with what has been recommended for years from the Seattle Planning Commission. This legislation constitutes a technical change as part of the annual comprehensive plan update that we are going to be engaging in over the next few months, and it recognizes that the term "single-family" is actually a misnomer. It's a legacy that's more rooted in our exclusionary zoning policies. And the reality is that single-family or detached-only zoning doesn't reflect the current makeup of our neighborhoods that have duplexes and triplexes and row houses and connected homes with courtyards. Many places, like my old apartment that I lived in in Queen Anne, that was a four-story brownstone, would mean that if these structures were taken down, the zoning code has changed and shrunk over the years, over the last 50 years. It has made it so that these structures would no longer be able to be there, and only a detached, single structure could be there. Many cities are going through similar efforts to create titles that allow for more inclusive zoning titles that can help mitigate the impact of standalone-only housing and detached-only housing. This legislation responds to the Seattle Planning Commission's request since 2018 to change the name to Neighborhood Residential Zoning, as laid out in their Neighborhoods for All report. And a request has been sent and reiterated by the Planning Commission as well every year, and has also been called for by the Seattle City Council in our Comprehensive Plan Docketing Resolution every year since 2018. So here we are in 2021, and this is our opportunity to listen to the ways in which community organizations, our planning commission, the the conversation at large across the country has continued to evolve to make sure that neighborhood businesses and apartments and row houses and courtyards, courtyard housing like the ones I talked about, all can be both replicated in different areas of our city to make sure that folks have more access to schools, parks, and services and grocery stores, and that we can have a zoning code that more accurately reflects the diversity of housing across our city, multigenerational households, inclusive housing, and different ways that people live together in Seattle to hopefully create a more livable and affordable Seattle. I'm excited that we are going to be building off the Planning Commission's recommendations and recognize that historically, the previous term has been used to further exclusionary practices and has roots in discriminatory policies. So this is our opportunity to show that language matters. Well, this is a technical change. It could help lead to a zoning designation that's more equitable and inclusive and meant to accurately reflect the diversity of our neighborhoods and our diverse housing structures that we have as we seek to create the Comprehensive Plan changes in 2023 in anticipation of the 2024 actions. Just a few notes about process, and again, thanks to Councilmember Strauss for your leadership through the Land Use and Planning Committee. This is just a notification today for future legislation. So we published a notification today for a 30-day notice for a hearing for public hearing that is set for July 28th in the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee. This policy will track the annual comprehensive plan update process over the next two and a half months. We will then officially introduce legislation in early August, and there will be additional opportunities for public hearing and discussion in the Land Use Committee. And then we will have discussion in September, as expected. In December of this year, or January of 2022, we will then introduce follow-up legislation amending the code to reflect a possible name change in the document in anticipation of broader changes that might be possible in 2023 and 2024. Written comments on this can be sent to my office. Erin House is collecting those, given just the sheer amount of workload among the floor. And thanks to Erin for her work on this. Erinhouse@seattle.gov and can be mailed to City Hall as well. Questions regarding the proposal can also be sent to 206-615-1567. And thanks as well to Noah On and Councilmember Strauss's office and Lish Whitson of Central Staff for their work on this. Lish can be reached at centralstaff@lish, L-I-S-H dot whitson, W-H-I-T-S-O-N, at seattle.gov. And this is just the beginning of a much longer conversation, and it starts with a notice of a public hearing to come in 30 days. So excited to work with all of you, and again, thanks to Councilmember Strauss and his office for their work with us as we seek to have a more inclusive and reflective zoning language change possibly.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Mosketa. Are there any comments or questions on that report? All right. I am not seeing any hands raised. We're going to go ahead and move down the line. Next up is Councilmember Peterson, followed by Councilmember Salat. Good morning, Councilmember Peterson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Regarding our city's Transportation Utilities Committee, we have no items on this afternoon's full city council agenda. Our Transportation Utilities Committee meets on the first and third Wednesdays each month at 9:30 in the morning, and so our next committee meeting will be Wednesday, July 7. Our committee agenda on July 7 will include our final discussion of the strategic plan for Seattle City Light, and we'll vote on that corresponding resolution. We'll hear from the City Light Review Panel and learn more about why they fully endorse Seattle City Light's strategic plan. As reported in the Seattle Times, as mentioned earlier by our Office of Intergovernmental Relations, we've got good news for Seattle from our federal government with the United States Department of Transportation awarding a grant to help our efforts to restore the West Seattle Bridge. While the dollar amount was less than our request, it is remarkable to have received any of these competitive federal funds. We're grateful to the U.S. Department of Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg and to our congressional delegation, including Representatives Jayapal and Smith and Senators Cantwell and Murray. I'd also like to thank our own Seattle Department of Transportation for seizing this and all opportunities to cobble together money to restore the West Seattle High Bridge and to strengthen the Lower Bridge that has been carrying much of the burden. SDOT submitted an award-winning application, which included a letter of support signed by this city council. So thanks to all of our colleagues here. I'm hopeful SDOT will put this $11 million to good use for the $107 million restoration project, which includes funding from the city, Puget Sound Regional Council. Thanks to our members on PSRC for lobbying for funding for us and from other sources. And I'm sure Councilmember Herbl may speak to this as well. If you want any information on the West Seattle Bridge, Councilmember Herbl's blog is by far the most thorough. Quick note from District 4. Yesterday afternoon, I visited with the residents of Magnuson Park. It's helpful highlight that thanks to city government policies and funding from all levels of government, we opened Magnuson Park to become home to many low-income residents with the completion of the buildings for the nonprofit Solid Ground several years ago and the more recent renovation of the historic naval barracks, Building 9 by Mercy Housing. There are now 850 low-income residents who call Magnuson Park home. 75% of those residents identify as Black, Indigenous, and people of color. And while the nonprofit organizations that own and manage the buildings there are responsible for the care of their tenants, our city government that runs all of Magnuson Park shares in this responsibility to fill any gaps. Also, the park's policies, programming, and infrastructure impact the park's residents. So this heat wave is a stark reminder that our climate adaptation strategies as a city government must always be mindful of the residents of Magnuson Park as well as people throughout the city. Of course, City Hall did a quick and thorough job throughout Seattle to respond to reports of the heat wave, but I'd like to see both of the nonprofits and our city government do more for Magnuson Park residents. Over the weekend, I reached out to both of the nonprofits as well as to our city departments to make sure everyone is being as responsive as possible to the needs of the low-income residents there. Several of the nonprofit buildings made available community rooms that are cool, and I know residents would like to see more of those common area rooms open. Would like to see at least one city-owned building at the park to serve as a cooling room as well, and would like to have a more flexible and helpful policy for how to cool individual units. My office will continue to encourage both of the nonprofits and our city government departments on these issues. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Peterson. Any other, any questions or comments on that report? I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and continue down the line here. Next up is Councilmember Salat, followed by Councilmember Strauss. Good morning, Councilmember Salat.
Thank you, Council President Gonzalez, and good morning, everyone. I wanted to start by offering socialist alternatives and my office's deepest condolences to the relatives and loved ones of those who have lost their lives in the shocking condo building collapse in Miami, Florida. I can imagine the extreme anxiety being experienced by those who are still waiting to find out what's happened to their loved ones as workers painstakingly go through the overwhelming amount of wreckage. As the New York Times reports, "Such a catastrophic collapse of an occupied building absent a bomb or an earthquake is rare, and investigators are struggling to understand how it could have come with so little urgent warning." And forensic structural engineers have only begun piecing together the evidence to pinpoint the causes of this deadly collapse. But one thing that has been revealed, among other things, is that three years ago, a consultant found alarming evidence of, quote-unquote, "major structural damage", and this has been reported in the same New York Times article, "major structural damage to the concrete slab below the pool deck", and again, quote-unquote, "abundant cracking and crumbling of the columns, beams, and walls of the parking garage under the building." And so, of course, evidence is going to be forthcoming in the coming weeks and months, but I think this is also a reminder of how we, it is actually part of a working-class fight back for high-quality infrastructure, especially in the case of buildings, bridges, and other infrastructure where it's not only the infrastructure, but human life that's involved. On today's city council agenda, there will be the confirmation votes for seven executive appointments to the Green New Deal Oversight Board. The next meeting from the Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee will be scheduled for a special time. I believe we are coming to Thursday, July 15th, at a time that I think still has to be determined. I apologize. I will make sure that the committee members are fully apprised and we have a quorum. You know, we have an understanding that the time works for all committee members. And I apologize for having to schedule a special time, but there's just so much work that the committee has to do that needs to be done before the budget, and we just don't have any option. At our Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee last week, we heard presentations from city council central staff on the next two bills in the renters' movements fight for a full Bill of Rights. The first bill requires landlords to provide six-month notice for rent increases, and the second requires landlords to provide relocation assistance when they displace their tenants with outrageous rent increases, a process that has come to be known as economic evictions. I expect that we'll have more discussion and then votes in committee next month on these urgently needed bills. Through the collective strength and fighting approach, rank-and-file renters, progressive unions that have been part of the renters' rights struggle in our city, tenant advocates, and socialists have beaten back the corporate landlord lobby so far as they have tried to defeat and undermine every single victory that renters have won. We have helped build more of a lifeline for thousands of working families to stay housed during this pandemic, though, of course, we know the fight is far from over. We know that the crisis for renters is deepening, not letting up. That's because corporate landlords are wasting no time in jacking up rents in 2021. Seattle landlords have raised rents an average of 13.4% between January and May 2021, according to industry analyst Apartmentalist.com. That's 2.5 times the national average. The same report boasted to its landlord clients that, quote, "pandemic pricing is officially over," end quote, and, quote, "2021 has seen some of the fastest rent growth we have on record in our data," end quote. These shocking 2021 rent increases are precisely why we need to ban rent increases without six-month notice, require landlords to pick up the cost of the trauma and dislocation they cause when they evict tenants to rent increases, and that is also precisely why our city needs a strong rent control policy without corporate loopholes. I'm happy to announce that on September 18th at 4:00 p.m. at Calenderson Park, my office alongside tenant advocate organizations, progressive unions, and many other activists will be organizing a rally to demand such a rent control policy. My office will be introducing the legislation which would enact rent control in Seattle as soon as the state lifts the residential rent control ban. Our council staff, my council office staff, and community members, volunteers have been circulating our rent control petition at community gatherings in the last few weeks, and the response is outstanding. Community members, renters, of course, but not just renters, are outraged. They're absolutely outraged about what the profiteering corporate landlords are doing in Seattle. There is a much bigger understanding of why we need rent control than even three years ago. And the people we have been talking with are demanding that the City Establishment Act, and they are excited about, excited to hear about the push for rent control and our full renters' Bill of Rights. I would urge community members who want to get involved to call my office, 206-684-8803, and I urge everyone to plan to come out on September 18. At our last committee meeting, we also discussed with community organizers involved in the Stop the Money Pipeline campaign to force financial institutions and insurance companies to stop backing fossil fuel infrastructure like Tar sands, oil pipelines. Today's deadly temperature and the weekend, as we have seen, clearly hold up a specter of climate disaster and illustrate that the short-term profit motive that is the essence of global capitalism on its most fundamental level is an existential threat to all of humanity. While the billionaire class can be forced to take some measures for, both for their profits and under pressure from mass resistance, and we will see some of that happening, it has been and will be a day late and a dollar short. To have any hope of averting a full-on catastrophe for the planet, we will need the international working class to take the fossil fuel, banking, and other sectors into democratic public ownership to urgently shift into a global socialist economy powered by clean renewable energy. Organizing such as to end the Keystone Pipeline, the Stop the Money Pipeline Campaign, all of these are crucial steps being taken by determined activists, and my council office is proud to be organizing with them. This will be needed alongside a militant mobilization of the union workers in the fossil fuel sector with the whole labor movement in solidarity to demand just transition and retraining for workers into the clean renewable energy economy. With the help of city council central staff, my office is developing legislation to give the Green New Deal Oversight Board the legal authority to rate insurance companies and other financial institutions who bid on city contracts to enable the city of Seattle to join the international movement pledging not to do business with financial institutions backing the fossil fuel corporations that are endangering human life. I will be supporting the bill coming before the full city council this afternoon, allowing larger affordable housing apartment buildings to be built on properties owned or controlled by churches, mosques, synagogues, and other faith communities. And I wanted to specifically advocate for affordable housing in the central area. A year ago this month, I stood at the Tax Amazon Press Conference outside New Hope Missionary Baptist Church with a dozen clergy and many community activists, the LEHI and socialists to demand that the city establishment support the central area housing plan, which has been developed by the Reverend Dr. Robert L. Jeffrey Sr., who is the senior pastor at the New Hope Church and other area clergy. The clergy's housing plan included a demand that the city pass increased affordable housing density options for faith communities. So I'm happy that the bill is before us today, but we also need to be clear that these zoning provisions are only a small part of what is needed to actually make the affordable housing come to life. They also need to be funded. We also need to invest hundreds of millions of dollars a year more in affordable socially-controlled housing because zoning changes, while are necessary to facilitate construction, do not pay for it. Over the years, I've spoken with many faith leaders who are eager to build affordable housing on their properties. As part of this movement, they understand keenly both the urgency and the moral mandate for more affordable housing. At the Tax Amazon Press Conference a year ago, we demanded that a portion of the Amazon tax, which was then rebranded as Jump Start, be dedicated toward building affordable housing in the central district to reverse racist gentrification. As a result of this advocacy and the push by hundreds of community members, we were able to win an amendment in that final bill to dedicate a portion of the Amazon tax each year towards central district housing. This was an important accomplishment and definitely a victory for the Black Lives Matter movement and the protests at that time, but we also know it's not enough. Reverend Jeffrey has explained how 50 years ago, the city establishment at that time essentially forced the church to sell its land to the city. The forced selling price, under the city establishment's threat of taking it to eminent domain, was $34,000. This was an absolute travesty against Seattle's Black community. That land today is worth more than $2 million, and at least a part of it needs to be developed into affordable housing. The church, in partnership with the Low Income Housing Institute, LEHI, has developed a plan to build affordable housing for 87 households, working-class, Black households with preference, community preference, for people who have been displaced or are threatened with displacement in the central district on the city's stolen property. This project is urgently needed. Needless to say, the housing crisis is raging, affordability crisis is raging throughout the city. Reverend Jeffrey has spoken eloquently about how the city needs to make reparations for its debt 50 years ago by giving back the land to the church community and funding the $10.7 million that is needed to complete this anti-gentrification affordable housing project, striking a blow for racial and housing justice and against racist gentrification. My office will continue to stand with the clergy and our entire community in demanding that the city council and the mayor's office commit to these investments without delay. the city, city council and the and the mayor's office commit to these investments without delay. Last week, my office sent to the clerk's office for introduction, the legislation to decriminalize psychedelic drugs in Seattle. I really appreciate the activists from Decriminalize Nature campaign for speaking up and urging the city council to support this legislation. As I explained last week, the and before as well, the legislation uses the same legal approach that Seattle used to decriminalize cannabis shortly before it was legalized statewide by essentially saying that the enforcement on the related to psychedelics would be made a large priority by the police department, which was the approach used for cannabis at that time. And that is what this legislation will do with psychedelics such as shrooms, LSD and ayahuasca. As I've mentioned in the past, I support decriminalizing psychedelics for several reasons. First, of course, the general reason, even for harmful and addictive drugs increasingly science and statistical evidence is showing that the criminal justice system is a terrible response. Reagan's failed war on drugs did nothing but expand mass incarceration, decimating whole communities, especially communities of color. The criminalization of psychedelic drugs is only a small part of that mass incarceration system, but it is a part. And so that is a reason to do this. But more specifically, there is significant research showing that these psychedelic drugs are very rarely harmful and can have significant benefits. It can have a powerful benefit, research shows in some circumstances to treat PTSD, depression and addiction. And some of the drugs also have a long history of use in religious ceremonies, especially in the indigenous community. I my office would assume that this legislation would be most appropriately referred to Councilmember Herbl's Public Safety and Human Services Committee. So last week, we have sent their legislation to Councilmember Herbl to ask if that committee has capacity to schedule the legislation. And if the Public Safety and Human Services Committee does not have the capacity to fit this bill in for discussion, we can either we can either refer it to the committee that I chair or we can send it straight to the full city council. And I know Councilmember Herbl, you may not have had a chance to review the legislation and I'm happy to follow up with your office later today and tomorrow. And I know that you will be meeting with Decriminalize Nature, sorry, later this week. So maybe we can talk then, but if you do have a general sense of whether or not you're able to schedule this legislation in your committee, that I would really appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Councilmember Herbl, do you have any information for Councilmember Sawant now? And if not, no worries. I know that Councilmember Lewis has already has also spoken about this legislation, so I know that there's no less than three council members who have interest in this area. As council president, I do think it makes sense to have it referred to the Public Safety and Human Services Committee. So I am hoping that we can all have a conversation about this particular legislation before I have to make a decision about where to refer it to.
Thank you. Yes, I don't have a whole lot more to add other than what Councilmember Sawant already mentioned. I am going to be discussing with Decriminalize Nature, their thoughts about the timing of legislation as it relates to the strategy that we have all discussed before, which is the consideration of this work as part of the drug policy reform work that the overdose emergency. Oh, boy, I'm forgetting the name of the task force. But the new task force that that is is meeting met for the first time last week with several members of Decriminalize Nature sitting on the task force itself. So I want to just make sure that we are we are observing the process for bringing forth this legislation that everybody thinks is is most aligned with with the goals of of the legislation itself. And so again, there is a broader conversation going on around drug policy reform. And since the the ultimate efforts are really focused on on state government for the next legislative session, I just really want to hear directly from the members of Decriminalize Nature about about their thoughts about how a potential Seattle ordinance would would fit within that strategy.
Okay. I in my office will follow up with you, Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Sawant on sort of next steps procedurally so that we can make sure that we run as smooth of a process as we possibly can. So it sounds like there's more to come here. Councilmember Sawant, you're off mute, so I imagine you have something you'd like to say.
Yes, thank you, President Gonzalez. And yeah, I'm looking forward to that conversation between your office as president and Councilmember Herbl as committee chair. I also agree with you, it's good if this goes to the committee. And I and I agree with Councilmember Herbl that this is, I mean, this legislation is not by itself. It is actually Decriminalize Nature itself. The whole idea has come about as part of the overall push to take drug related policy to something that is at least as a semblance of reflection, if not act, you know, what we really need is really moving the drug policy towards what science and statistical evidence indicates. And so this is part of that larger thing. I would say that as far as the legislation is concerned, though, yes, there is a task force, but the city council is the city's highest legislative body and it has higher authority than an appointed task force and it will be a far more democratic process. And so I would say that in that sense, it will be good and important, good if the council does it and important for the council to set the tone or help set the tone also for the future conversation on this drug related policy type of discussions.
Any other comments or questions on that report? I'm not seeing any. Councilmember Swann, did you have anything else to add?
I didn't know.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure that was the end end of everything you had to report today. All right. Next up is going to be Councilmember Strauss, followed by Councilmember Herbl. Good morning, Councilmember Strauss.
Good morning. Thank you, colleagues. I will start this report with, well, I started my weekend with assisting a swimmer in distress from my kayak. I was on the beach and everyone on the beach noticed that the swimmer needed assistance. And so I just take this, I kayaked out to them, I picked them up and we paddled back into shore. I I do want to highlight for everyone listening that if you are out on the water, please wear your PFD and please do not swim outside of your comfort zone. If you do go in to assist someone in distress in the water, you must bring equipment such as a PFD or life ring because if you go in with just your muscle strength, you will not be strong enough unless you are well trained to be able to bring another individual up to the surface of the water. What will happen is that there will then be two people to rescue and making the situation worse. So again, highlighting that hypothermia will set in even on hundred and ten days. If you are in Lake Washington or Puget Sound, you have fifteen minutes. So the first thing to do if you do go overboard is to get your breathing under control to avoid shock and involuntary gasping and panicked breathing. Once you've one, you have about ten minutes from the time you're in the water to functionally self rescue by grabbing a rope, pulling yourself back onto the boat or at least stabilizing your head above water. Because after ten minutes, most people's fine motor skills have stopped working. You might not feel cold and it will be hard to do any functional tasks. So from firsthand experience this last weekend, I can tell you as a very strong paddler, it was difficult to bring another human into shore. So for everyone out there enjoying the water, please wear a PFD, swim within your comfort zone. And if you're going in to assist someone else, make sure you have the proper equipment. Thank you. To the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee, there are no items from the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee on today's introduction and referral calendar. There are seven items from the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee on today's full agenda, which include five appointments to the Landmarks Preservation Board, Council Bill one two zero zero, one two zero one zero six, the landmark ordinance for the Borgo House on Capitol Hill, and the Council Bill one two zero zero eight one, which grants zoning flexibility to affordable housing developments on land owned by religious institutions. The next meeting of our Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee will be on Wednesday, July fourteenth, starting at nine thirty A M. An overview of my last week, I was able to, on Tuesday, I was able to attend the North Seattle Industrial Association and the historic signing of the Seattle Rescue Plan. Thank you again, Budget Chair Moskata, Council President and Mayor Durkin for getting that bill across the finish line as quickly as you did so that we are able to get dollars into people's hands in our community. Again, thank you, Councilmember Moskata, for your leadership with Jump Start last year, otherwise we would have been using, we would not have been able to put these dollars in our community. On Wednesday, I was able to attend the King County Growth Management and Planning Council where we voted on updating updating the countywide planning policies. And I was able to participate in the A W C Director's Annual Conference throughout the week and on Wednesday and Friday specifically. I want to congratulate previous president Mayor Sue Ingmoody of TWISP and congratulate incoming president Councilmember Kent Keel of University Place. Lastly, last week, I was able to attend the Moving AIDS Memorial Pathway dedication on Saturday morning. Thank you to Councilmember Rasmussen and everyone. Specifically, Councilmember Rasmussen spoke about his work here on city council starting in twenty fifteen on this project. One thing to highlight that really stuck with me during the presentation was noting that it took fifteen, over fifteen years for the first HIV cocktail to be created. And it demonstrates the disparity when we see the COVID vaccine created within a year. This art installation memorial is equal parts remembrance, history lesson and call to action. So again, thank you to everyone who made this happen. In this coming week, my staff will be meeting with the Green Lake Chamber of Commerce and the Fremont Neighborhood Association. On Wednesday, I'll be joining the Fremont Chamber of Commerce. And unfortunately, we've had to reschedule the Ballard Avenue Design Charette to ensure all participants have their health and safety protected. This was going to take place this Thursday and will be rescheduling for later this month to ensure everyone can participate safely. Here in District Six, last week, I met with neighbors from Ballard, Longford, two from Finney Ridge and folks in Crown Hill, discussed achieving Vision Zero, the history of Green Lake, Hala and M H A and specifically the history of Longford. We discussed traffic pedestrian bicycle transit flow around Green Lake. Again, taking this opportunity to highlight my call that we need to reopen West Green Lake Way North, the two way traffic and a two way protected bike lane. And I was able to walk with members from the Crown Hill Village Association to see a number of their projects. They're they have an amazing community garden that is now at multiple locations, bringing people together and creating learning opportunities for both youth and older adults. This is really an all ages and ability type of project. And I really encourage anyone who has any interest to go out and check out the great work at the community garden up at Crown Hill. Their group also applies for grants and has created some sidewalks in the neighborhood and building the plan for the community as infill development occurs with the most recent upzone. So again, I look forward to talking to residents during office hours this week on Tuesday and Wednesday afternoons. I hope everyone is able to stay safe, avoid the heat, using the city cooling centers and staying safe on the water. Lastly, I want to call out my mom's birthday last week. Happy birthday to my mom. And she finished her thirty years on the National Association of Social Workers Board. So having done thirty years on the board, she is now fully in retirement. So happy birthday, Mom. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Council President. That is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Any comments or questions on that report? I have not seen any. So with that, we are going to move down the line over to Councilmember Herbl. And then after Councilmember Herbl will be Councilmember Juarez. Good morning, Councilmember Herbl.
Good morning. Hello, I'm sorry, I could have offered these initial comments as a part of Councilmember Strauss's report. My apologies for being a little slow on the draw. So I'm just going to start with letting folks know that I am considering bringing back a couple of amendments from that were discussed in the Land Use Committee Amendments to Council Bill twelve zero zero eight one. One amendment would lower the average affordable housing income threshold to sixty percent of A M I for rental households. Again, this is an average and not all units need to be at sixty percent. And then the second amendment that I'm considering bringing forward would increase the term of affordability to seventy five years consistent with our requirements of of developers as part of the M H A Performance Program. Both of these amendments were discussed in committee and did not receive a pass recommendation, but was had a had a tie vote at with two voting in favor and two opposed. So I think this would be a good topic of discussion at full council. Want to just lift up the fact that the Central Area Land Use Review Committee has contacted council members in support of these amendments as has the Low Income Housing Institute, Lehigh. And just really want to, again, underscore that this legislation has the potential to help meet community needs, but could do so even more effectively and fair and fairly with these kinds of changes that are, again, very similar to the expectations that we have of of developers as part of the M H A program. So just wanted to start off mentioning that and then moving on to.
Yeah, since it's it's since it's directly related to a matter that Councilmember Strauss suggests addresses part of his report, why don't we go ahead and give Councilmember Strauss an opportunity to respond and then we can move on.
Thank you. And I did see Councilmember Herbl attempt to get comments in on mine. So thank you for the flexibility here. Councilmember Herbl, the intention of your amendments is welcome. But at this time, they are not amendments that I can support. I would say that we had robust discussion at council, at my council committee last week. And what is center to what is centered to the issue here is that we have a number of projects that are already in the works, understanding that the framework from the state that was passed to the city. And that is why Councilmember Peterson, thank and thank you, Councilmember Peterson, brought the amendment requesting the data for the additional and then so that we can come back in a year to see how these programs are being implemented and make adjustments at that time. If you wanted to include in your amendments a implementation date of a year out from here, that is something that I could consider talking to you about, you know, that that might move my hand from being in opposition where I currently am to support. Because as I said to Councilmember Peterson in the committee last week, I am completely open to this conversation. It's just we need to, I'm I'm open to having the conversation. I can't support these amendments. So I can tell you that from what I have heard, it would be very concerning for me to put forward these amendments on this bill today. What I would love to work with both of you on is how do we right size this proposal, this legislation for the future? Thank you.
Councilmember Sawant.
I just wanted to comment briefly to say I will be supporting the amendments that Councilmember Herbl is bringing forward.
Okay. Okay, are there any other committee members who want to give the rest of the council the benefit of their discussion from committee? Councilmember Moskata, please.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in here and thank you for the invitation to offer some comments, Council President Gonzalez, especially in our remote nature. I think that this helps add to the understanding of how committee meetings go when we're not able to be there in person and maybe weren't part of the committee meeting. So I'll just offer my my comments that I made at the last committee meeting in alignment with the chair's position. I think that number one, the the amendments that Councilmember Peterson and now Councilmember Herbl have discussed are well intentioned. I think that there are differences, though, between the M H A program and what we're talking about here, and especially because of the type of housing that is currently being planned for under the existing model. There's a number of concerns about whether or not certain projects would be able to move forward with that type of timeframe. We also know that there's the extension opportunities that that the chair has noted in the past that make it very likely that extensions will be offered. And just overall. And just overall, I think the biggest driving force is that we've heard from a number of religious institutions that they would, it would, it would create a hardship for them to create the affordable housing that we so desperately need on those properties in the very near future. So in alignment with what Michael Ramos from the Church Council of Greater Seattle said in opposition to the amendment, I will be opposing an effort if it comes forward today, but just wanted to offer that background for those who weren't part of the committee meeting last week.
Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Council President. I will just highlight that I am, again, open to the consideration of these amendments, and now is not the right time. When we received the position of opposition from the Church Council of Greater Seattle, who is the entity that would be utilizing this bill? If the entity that will, and the entities that are represented with the Church Council of Greater Seattle are not welcoming these changes and would make it harder for them to utilize this bill, then I ask, why are we passing these amendments at this time?
I think, I think I, I don't see any other hands raised. I'm not sure if Councilmember Herbold wants to add anything else, but I think we are ready to move along. So I'm gonna hand it back over to Councilmember Herbold.
Sure. I will move along. But I do, I do just wanted to say, hearing from an advocacy group that will use the regulatory capacity to develop affordable housing, that they would like a lower obligation to have to fulfill is not unusual. And so I think we really, in, in, in this case, we've heard from the Church Council. In other cases, when we have been discussing legislation that impacts by giving greater development capacity to a private developer and having the discussion about what our expectations are of that developer to, to provide for affordable housing, we've also heard from, from those developers that they would like a lower obligation. What I'm concerned about is, is I don't, I, I understand that many of these projects will very likely be projects where the partner of the religious institution will be a nonprofit housing developer. I don't want to create a situation where we are actually incentivizing the development of higher-income affordable housing by making it more likely that the, that the, that the religious facility, the religious institution partners with a for-profit developer rather than one of our low-income housing profit developers, who would be provided, who would be building that sixty percent AMI housing and for a longer affordability term. So I'm happy to talk, Councilmember Strauss, about ways to ensure that projects that are sort of already in a development phase are not negatively impacted by an amendment like this. But I appreciate your, your openness to maybe structuring this in a, in a way that addresses the concerns about creating that incentive for higher income, income affordable housing in the future. And so moving on to items that I have from my committee, from the Public Safety and Human Services Committee on the full council agenda today, I have just one item, and that is the appointment of Megan McCann as Court Administrator of the Seattle Municipal Court. We will, we heard her confirmation in committee, and her confirmation was presented by presiding Judge Gregory. And she comes highly recommended by the, by the, the hiring panel that, that conducted those interviews. And so just really excited to have her on board. Just quick update from the Human Services Department on all of the incredible work that they've done this weekend to provide survival services to folks in this unprecedented heat wave. As we know, Fisher Pavilion operated as a twenty-four-hour-a-day shelter, opening on Saturday. It stated to close on Tuesday morning. The Salvation Army opens, or operates the shelter and continues to do so in a way that is, that proves them to be an experienced and flexible partner in the city's emergency response. The shelter also includes a place for people to come in for the day to stay cool, even if they don't stay overnight. Thirty-three people stayed at the shelter on Sunday night. The shelter has the capacity to serve seventy-three individuals. Today, Public Health will visit Fisher to give guests information on COVID-19 and the vaccine availability. In addition, Salvation Army opened up a cooling center in, in White Center this, this weekend, which served residents in West Seattle. They served nineteen people on Sunday. And the Seattle Indian Center extended its day center hours on both Saturday and Sunday to give people a place to stay cool for longer. The Southeast Senior Center also extended its hours on Sunday to serve older adults who needed a place to shelter from the heat. The Lake City Community Center, staffed by community, neighborhood service providers, expanded their hours this weekend until 6:00 PM to serve as a cooling center for people experiencing homelessness. It served forty-one people on Sunday. And then the Hope Team Navigators worked throughout the weekend to outreach people living unsheltered and provide transport to cooling centers as requested. There were one hundred and forty engagements from the Hope Team with people living unsheltered, over three hundred and fifty bottles of water distributed, forty referrals to emergency cooling centers, and thirty bus tickets distributed for folks to get to cooling centers. Want to make sure that people are aware of options for cooling today in District One. Just focusing on District One, there's a lot, as mentioned before, there are a lot of good citywide resources online. But just focusing, again, on, on District One, three libraries will be open today from ten to six PM, each the Delridge Branch, the South Park Branch. And this weekend, it was announced that the High Point Branch would be open as well. And then seniors at, four seniors, the Senior Center of West Seattle is open until four thirty PM. And then, as mentioned before, the Salvation Army White Center Community Center on Sixteenth Avenue is open until seven PM. And King County has opened a cooling center in the Top Hat Neighborhood, but that is also available to West Seattle residents. The center is a way for residents to escape the heat, but also will welcome overnight stays and has a air-conditioned area with water and refreshments for shorter visits. Many of us heard this morning that there's a new cooling site that was announced today, the Amazon Meeting Center on Seventh Avenue. And the location has a capacity for one thousand people, will be open from ten to eight PM. And of course, masks are required, and attendees must provide some sort of ID upon entrance. No pets are allowed, except for servicing animals. I want to say a few words about the, the impacts of, of heat on, on fire in our city. Yesterday, of course, we sent, set an all-time record for high temperature in Seattle, and today's forecast calls for that record to be broken. The combination of heat and dry weather significantly increases the risk of fires. Seattle Fire Department noted that yesterday they responded to six brush and bark fires. They are asking people to not light fireworks, dispose of smoking materials in proper receptacles and dials in water, make sure chains or other carpets are not dragging from your vehicles, and do not park on tall grass. I want to reiterate that the use of fireworks in these conditions is extremely dangerous and can be deadly. Two years ago, a fire in White Center just south of West Seattle resulted in a fire burning down a house. There was a death from smoke inhalation and the displacement of twelve residents from a neighboring home. And this fire was identified to be caused by fireworks. Just a quick update from the Seattle Police Department, there will be a memorial service for Seattle Police Officer Alexandra Lexie Harris on Thursday, July first, at T-Mobile Park at one PM. You can find more information at the SPD blotter and, including details about the procession that will be shared in coming days. Just a quick update on the discussion in committee last week regarding the less lethal weapons legislation. Not going to get into the substance of the bill we're discussing just now, but I'm happy to talk to any council members that have questions. I do want to just talk really about the process moving forward, because there's been some discussion and some confusion about, about that discussion. So the Department of Justice and the Monitor have not conducted a formal review, but they have informally been discussing the content of the bill and providing feedback. Under paragraph one seventy-seven of the consent decree, the DOJ and the Monitor conduct their formal review after the Seattle Police Department has proposed policy revisions. The engagement that we conducted with the DOJ and the Monitor about the draft bill, it was an informal process for us to have dialogue before the council takes legislative action and before the formal consent decree review process takes place. So if the bill becomes law, what happens next is then SPD would draft policy revisions within sixty days, as provided by Section Four of the bill. And those policy revisions would reflect the content of the bill. The Department of Justice and the Monitor would then review the policy revisions. This is when their formal review under the consent decree takes place. Third, the court would review the policy revisions. It's also required by the consent decree. And fourth, if the court approves the policy revisions, then the revised bill and the substantive provisions of the bill will take effect. And again, that's clarified in Section Five of the bill itself. Held virtual office hours on Friday, was glad to see so many of my council colleagues at the AMP Memorial, AIDS Memorial Project Dedication this weekend, and really excited to see the, the celebration of life and love and recognition of the history that has preceded the, well, preceded, that has actually, the opposite of preceded, that has come after the efforts of the ACT UP movement to get our government's attention to the, the needs to address the AIDS crisis. Want to also echo Councilmember Peterson's comments earlier about how pleased I am to learn about the eleven-million-dollar federal grant for the repair of the West Seattle Bridge, and thanks to our federal delegation for the work on this, especially Representative Jaya Paul and Senators Maria Cantwell and Patty Murray and Representative Adam Smith. And was excited to hear this morning about a couple of other projects that I know are really important to District One, including the, the South Park Georgetown Trail and the East Marginal Way Improvement Project. So this is really, really good news to start the week. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbold. Are there any comments or questions on that report? All right. Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and go down the line. Next up is Councilmember Juarez, and then we will hear from Councilmember Lewis. Good morning, Councilwoman Juarez.
Thank you. We are sponsoring one item on this afternoon's council agenda in regards to the Metropolitan Park District. So it's Council Bill 120098, which merges the two volunteer commissions, the Board of Park Commissioners and the Park District Oversight Committee. I'll speak more to that this afternoon. In regards to the Public Asset and Native Communities Committee, there are no items on today's council agenda. The next committee meeting will be a special meeting on Friday, July sixteenth, at two o'clock. The following is a brief overview of our third quarter public asset native communities legislation. First, the current operations and maintenance agreement between the Woodland Park Zoo and the city is expiring in February 2022. The Woodland Park Zoo CEO Alejandro Gahal and Seattle Parks and Recreation Superintendent Jesus Agaray will transmit legislation in early July. I intend to hold a public hearing in August, followed by a discussion of the new draft agreement. A final vote is scheduled for September. Secondly, also in August, we will be joined by NHL Seattle President Todd LaWicki to hear a construction update on the Climate Pledge Arena, the Kraken Team, and the practice facility located in District Five. Going back to Metropolitan Parks District, last Monday, we held the first of three Metropolitan Park District meetings for the year. We reviewed and passed Resolution Forty-two and Forty-three. Resolution Forty-two was the action to delay the six-year plan by one year, and Resolution Forty-three was the merging of the two volunteer park organizations I just spoke to. Thank you for those who signed up for public comment. And the next, the next Metropolitan Park meeting will be October eighteenth after full council. In regards to parks, a quick update, there will be eleven waiting pools, and seven spray parks, and eight swimming beaches will be open this weekend, just in time for the hot weather. For a list of the locations and hours, please visit the parks website. The Parks Department is partnering with Axe On Stage to produce this year's teen summer recital. Small performances will happen in parks in August in conjunction with the Welcome Back Seattle programming. In regards to libraries, Seattle Public Library has reopened three levels of the Central Library, as well as Columbia, Delridge, Greenwood, High Point, Magnolia, Queen Anne, South Park, and University branches. Masks are still required of patrons and staff, and physical distancing standards remain in place. Over the weekend, Seattle Public Libraries reopened the International District Chinatown Branch, which means seventeen of the twenty-seven libraries are now open. Seattle Public Library anticipates reopening more branches the week of July fifth. In native communities, as I shared last week, I served as the keynote speaker for the twentieth annual Native Action Network Leadership Forum. This organization has been empowering young native women for over twenty years. Sound Transit. I attended the June twenty-fourth Board of Directors meeting, where the board considered Cherokee's realignment proposal. The Seattle-based infill stations in the Sodo, Smith Cove, Ballard Link stations were protected in the Tier Two of the proposal. We are still dealing with four tiers, and I'm guessing all of this will be in front of us at our next meeting on July twenty-second for a vote on realignment and moving forward. Again, it's gonna be a flexible plan. Nothing is written in stone. As you know, we have a lot of federal funding coming in, a lot of different variables out there with federal and state money. So we're hoping that we can get all of these projects that were promised to the voters under ST two and ST three done. No project is off the table, but some may be delayed. This means that instead of a tenure delay, we're looking up, at least to, up to a six-year delay. You can find a lot of the tiers and the information on the Sound Transit website, as well as our own. The projects will progress through the environmental reviews as close to the original ST schedule as possible. Design and right-of-way acquisition and preparation for project baselining will be reviewed for the affordability in the annual program review. King County Council Chair Claudia Balducci has been working hard to increase accountability for updated cost estimates and expanding our approach to a holistic realignment scenario. Mayor Durkin and I have provided supporting language in Councilmember Balducci's amendment to Chair Keel's proposal to better serve the voters of Sound Transit. As I shared, the next board meeting will be July twenty-second. At this meeting, the board is expected to vote on Cherokee's realignment proposal. A big thank you to my colleagues in groups like the Seattle Design Commission and the League of Women Voters who have engaged in this process. Upcoming this week, I look forward to joining the President of North Seattle College, Dr. Shamil Crawford, at the reopening of the Lake City Farmer's Market this Thursday, July first. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Juarez. Any comments or questions on that report? I've not seen any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and hear next from Councilmember Lewis. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam President. A little bit of a slower week for me than last week, but happy to, to jump into it. And a lot of my groundwork has been done by other members going last year in terms of some of the updates, so I can be a little bit more brief in covering some of them. There is nothing from the Select Committee on Homelessness Strategies and Investments on the introduction and referral calendar. I appreciate folks attending for our fairly brief meeting last week, where we did receive some prescient updates from the Office of Emergency Management regarding not only the anticipated wildfire season and smoke season, but also plans for this weekend in terms of the Office of Emergency Management's role in responding to the excessive heat. of the Office of Emergency Management's role in responding to the excessive heat and the role that they play in that process. I do want to take a moment just to recognize the nimbleness of our executive departments in setting up now a total of 34 cooling centers, centers that do not also include parks and recreations facilities, including public beaches that are open and, open and available for Seattleites to, to try and cool off during this incredibly unprecedented and difficult heat wave. You know, that said, I think that there's certainly more that, that we'll be able to do going forward here, particularly around making sure that we can redouble our efforts to develop and maintain more non-congregate enhanced shelter to mitigate the need to scramble so much whenever there is an emergency, to be able to provide our neighbors experiencing homelessness a place to go to meet basic needs like shelter from the environment. And I can, I look forward to continuing that work and following up on the investments that this council has made for increases in hotel rooms, tiny house villages, and other forms of non-congregate enhanced shelter, which continue to be a big priority of this council. I, on a related note, will be meeting with King County Regional Homelessness Authority CEO Mark Dones tomorrow on Tuesday to discuss some of the alignment between the city's priorities around shelter and housing and outreach policy as we continue our transition of moving more of our homelessness assets into the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, and look forward to reporting back on the nature of that conversation. I will be attending the Growth Management Board on Thursday as a representative of the council. Last week, I attended, along with councilmembers Muscata and Herbold, the Overdose Emergency and Innovative Recovery Task Force, which has been convened by a number of community stakeholders. It was really good to see the multi-faceted, the multi-faceted representation there of all levels of government, from King County Council members to members of our state legislative delegation, and then, of course, to members of the city council. I look forward to the recommendations coming out of that task force to inform this council's work on a public health-informed approach to drug policy instead of a carceral and punitive one. And that work will be continuing, I believe, every two weeks throughout the course of the summer with an anticipated report back as we get into the fall. So looking forward to continuing to engage in that scope of work, along with councilmembers Herbold and Muscata, and appreciate the leadership of the Public Defender Association, among other entities, who have convened that important work. Finally, as a number of colleagues have reported this morning, I was very proud to attend the AIDS Memorial Pathway dedication on a very, very hot Saturday morning in order to really recognize the great community work and, in very, very impactful placemaking. I'm right in the heart of the Capitol Hill neighborhood. I want to certainly give a shout out to former Seattle City Councilmember Tom Rasmussen, who really has dedicated a considerable amount of time in his post-council career, making sure that all of the, making sure that all of the prerequisites to getting that public art project finally installed were, were making all of their, their goals. And to the rest of the committee, particularly District 7 constituent Michelle Hassan, who was able to raise some of the private supporting funds to really bring that impactful project to fruition. Finally, I was proud to join Council President, Budget Chair Muscata, Councilmember Strauss, and Councilmember Herbold at the signing of the Seattle Rescue Plan by Mayor Durkin last Tuesday. It was a good moment of council and executive unity to get more assets out into the community as we start coming out of COVID and we start our process towards a robust and impactful recovery. With that, Madam President, I don't have any additional updates and looking forward to a week with no committee meetings.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis, for that report. Are there any comments or questions for Councilmember Lewis? Seen and hearing none, I will conclude this agenda item with my own report. I will be quick. I have several items on this introduction, on this afternoon's city council agenda. First, up for final action on this afternoon's agenda are three items that I am sponsoring. Agenda item one is Council Bill 120107. This legislation, if passed, would authorize the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the Seattle Fire Chiefs Association, IAFF, Local 2898. The collective bargaining agreement is a three-year agreement on wages, benefits, hours, and other working conditions for January 1st, 2019, through December 31st, 2021. This collective bargaining agreement affects approximately 34 regularly-appointed city employees, and it provides for wage adjustments of 6.6% for 2019, 2.7% for 2020, and 3% for 2021. The terms of the agreement met the negotiation parameters set by the members of the Labor Relations Policy Committee. Second is Agenda Item 3, which is the Appointment 01951. This is the appointment of Jeffrey L. Windmill to the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission for a term to December 31st, 2023. And lastly, Agenda Item 4 is Appointment 01871, which is the reappointment of Kimberly Walker as a member of the Families Education through Preschool and Promise Levy Oversight Committee for a term to December 31st, 2023. My regular meeting of the Governance and Education Committee won't occur until Tuesday, July 13th, so I look forward to saying more about that as we get closer. And like many folks who have already mentioned, I was also honored to join my colleagues at the dedication of the AIDS Memorial Pathway in conjunction with the celebration of pride this Saturday. It's really important, as so many others have said already, to recognize and honor and remember those lost to a pandemic whose response was slow, and really appreciate an opportunity to be in community with other folks and other council members this past Saturday. And lastly, just want to give a quick shout out to SPU, who worked around the clock the last few days to open more than 100 water fountains, ensuring residents have access to drinking water during the heat wave. Again, I hope everyone has an opportunity to go to a cooling center if, if you need one, and I do hope that all of us are able to stay cool and healthy as the heat continues to spike. My phone about an hour ago said it was already about 90 degrees and it's only 11:30 AM. So with that being said, if there is nothing else for the good of the order, we will be adjourned for this morning. Anything else? I'm not seeing any hands raised, so colleagues, sounds like we have concluded this morning's items of business on the agenda, so we are adjourned, and I will see you all at 2:00. Stay cool.
Thank you.
Bye.